Here's a progress report. We have eight members present. Mr. Fuhr is very close by and will be here momentarily. And Mr. Holden is reportedly 12 minutes away. So, that's the story. And we can't begin the meeting officially until we have both. Although we could actually do. Mr. Hernandez, would you like to do your presentation? For those of you who may be wondering what's going on, we can't begin official business until we have a quorum, which is 10 members. But since all the rest of us are here and you're all here, we can start on the ceremonial parts of the meeting, which we are now about to do. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Madam Chair. I had a group of students. I was just going to explain to them exactly what you said.
Oh, okay.
And I wanted them to understand how our council meetings basically work. Madam Chair, on behalf of myself, I think Councilmember Mark Ridley-Thomas, the mayor asked that I make an introduction today because he wanted to also be here to congratulate and thank a group of young people from the Youth Employment Systems Youth Build Program. On March 29th, the Los Angeles Minority Business Opportunity Committee, we know it as M-B-O-C, in conjunction with the United States Postal Service and the Playa Vista Emerging Business Program, hosted an industry AM contracting seminar. Now, when I mention Playa Vista, that includes Councilmember Ruth Galanter because she's someone who made sure that program was in place. The event created an opportunity for 59 minority and women-owned business owners to meet with 17 prime contractors on a one-on-one interviews to discuss upcoming projects and contracting opportunities. The students who are here with me today from the Yes Youth Build Program assisted M-B-O-C and his partners in facilitating this event by serving as hosts and hostesses at the U.S. Postal Service where the event was held. The students were prompt, courteous, professional, and providing logistical support. And the event, of course, was a huge success and due in part because of the service these students provided. Youth Employment Youth Build Program was founded in 1996 by Mr. James Smith. The program provides a full range of services to youth between the ages of 16 and 24, including construction site training, vocational training, career partnership, basic skills in GED preparation, leadership development, job development, and community service participations. This is a 40-hour-per-week, 10-to-12-month program. And they provide additional support, areas of financial support and management, housing, childcare assistance, and employment readiness through affiliated programs. I'd like the students to please stand up. And maybe we can give them all a hand. And members of the council, as a -- You guys can sit down now. I don't want you kind of standing. The reason it's kind of my honor to be able to make this introduction is when Youth Build got the funding from the federal government, this council participated in those applications and making sure it got funded. And we have several of these networks developed now. Youth Fair Chance, we have Youth Build, we have a new center that's developing in Councilmember Pacheco's district, we have a center that's contemplated for Councilmember Padilla's district, we have another center in South Central. And then you have a project like Playa Vista that's happening in Councilmember Galanter's district. That's a tremendous project. And us making sure that they participate in basically providing job opportunities for not only that community but the city as a whole. And then you have a concept like M-B-O-C whose job it is to make sure that there's outreach to minority contractors, women-owned businesses, and that they make it happen. And then you have partnerships like the county, like the federal government, the U.S. Postal Service, bringing all these things together. So hopefully, as I told these young people, the fact that they got to be there and collect a lot of business cards is important. And the fact that all those businesses and contractors got to see these youth participating in that program is important. And it kind of brought everything together. So again, hopefully with all this kind of work, we've become a much greater city, a city of opportunity for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you all for participating. The chair will now call on Mr. Bernson for a presentation. Two presentations. Yes, you're right.
Ken, come on up. Bring your wife with you. Come on up. Come on over here on this side. Madam President, members of the council, it's my distinct pleasure today to recognize somebody who has served our community in the judicial phase for the past 20 years. And that's the Honorable Ken Chotner. Judge Chotner has a long and distinguished career on the bench. And in 1982, Judge Chotner -- I can't even read the writing on here. Anyway, he came up with the idea and created a program of alternative sentencing that placed people convicted of certain misdemeanors into community service program, which removed graffiti instead of incarcerating them. The program was so successful that it was expanded throughout the many municipal court districts in Los Angeles County. In 1984, as supervising judge in the Van Nuys Courts, he created the Knight Traffic and Small Claims Court. And by the way, anytime that I know that our council office had some problem, he was always available as the presiding judge to meet with us on a number of issues and help us try to find solutions. During 1983 and in cooperation with the California Highway Patrol, Southern District Judge Chotner established the Police Officers On Call Program, which resulted in the savings of more than $1 million in overtime pay in the first three months of operation. The program was so successful, it was adopted by the LAPD Department statewide by the Highway Patrol. He established the first alternative jail program that would accept indigents, where the previous program was only available to those who could pay a daily fee for their incarceration. Judge Chotner was the founding project director of the Los Angeles County Consolidated Criminal History Reporting System, a system which gave law enforcement agencies the ability to retrieve an individual criminal history in less than two and a half seconds. Two and a half seconds. Judge Chotner has published articles, soliби, and books on criminal law and computers and has been consulted by 17 local, state, and national governments on the development of criminal history systems and has lectured nationally, internationally on the topic. On May 31st, yesterday, Judge Chotner will be retiring from the bench, retired from the bench. So therefore be resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the L.A. County City Council hereby thanks and commends Judge Kenneth Lee Chotner for his many years of dedication of dispensing justice from the bench and that Judge Chotner has wished great success in all his future endeavors. And I just want to add a little editorial. This is far beyond what normally we expect and is done by the judicial branch. Normally, they sit on the bench and they adjudicate trials and other things. But as you can see from this resolution, that Judge Chotner has been an innovator. He has changed the systems in which we operate. And he has left something behind that has benefited all of the people of Los Angeles, as well as the county. And also, he's been a friend through the years. And so it is with pleasure to see him be acknowledged, but a little bit of regret to see him leaving the bench, frankly, because he was an outstanding judge, that I present this on behalf of the city to Judge Ken Chotner, who is here with his wife, Ms. Chotner.
Hold on one second. Mr. Ridley-Thomas wants to say something.
Oh, not Ridley.
Yes, I'm here to reinforce the sentiments expressed by our inimitable colleagues.
What?
The senior member of the Los Angeles City Council. He likes to be referred to as such. And to salute Judge for his long-term commitment to public service and justice broadly defined. He reminds me of a point in time when we both served as members of the ACLU Board of Directors. And I simply rise to acknowledge how a difference can be made from the bench and for those who are stigmatized and caused to have their way made more difficult as a result of substance abuse and related activity, your intervention and the broad application that helps law enforcement, that captures efficiencies in terms of cost savings, as Mr. Bernson did say, ought to be applauded. And I want to rise and commend you and wish you well as you continue.
Thank you. I am very appreciative of the remarks and of this action. And it's especially meaningful to me because I am an Angelino, born here, raised here, educated here. And coming from another branch of government, this means a lot. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of you. And it sort of makes me feel old at this point to say with a number of your predecessors on these different projects. But it is very much appreciated. Thank you. And Hal?
Congratulations.
Hang on, we'll take pictures back when we finish, okay? Hang on that, I'm going to take you in the back room. I have one more to present here. Who's here from the YMCA, North Valley YMCA? Do we have somebody here from the North Valley YMCA? Nobody here? Well, we'll just have to.
Well, at this rate, we'll hear from Mr. Padilla. And if they show up, we'll call you back again later. Mr. Padilla, are you ready to do your presentation?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, this presentation this morning is actually a surprise for the person we hope to honor. I want to call forward Jesse Juaros. Councilmember Chick and I, just in the last committee meeting we had in the Information Technology and General Services Committee, took up the issue of the recruitment and retention challenge that we have here in the city of Los Angeles as it pertains to our technology staff. As the city itself is trying to come into the new millennium with our existing systems, it's been a challenge to hold on to our good employees because of the great opportunities that exist for them in the public -- excuse me, in the private sector. And this morning's presentation sort of embodies that challenge. For the last couple of years, the department, ITA, has been led by the man standing to my left, Jesse Juaros, who has, in that short time period, really put together quite a track record of accomplishments from getting the city safely through the Y2K challenge to not only creating but launching several of our e-government initiatives, including but not limited to the Citywide Electronic Forms Project, the E-Permit System for the Department of Building and Safety, and the Automated Inspection Request System that is going to serve as a model as we continue to develop and grow our e-government 3-1-1 system for the city of Los Angeles. But we've got the news that brings about mixed feelings just a couple of days ago, that Jesse has been offered a position you just couldn't refuse. We'll keep him close in the state of California. We'll keep his family close to make sure that he comes by and visits. But he's on to a new position to be the CIO for a national company known as Regulus. And I'll let him talk more about it. But we wanted to, on behalf of the committee, the mayor, and the entire city council, recognize Jesse for all he's contributed to the city, not only as general manager but a longer-term employee within the Information Technology Agency, and present this resolution of thank you and best wishes in your new endeavor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Padilla. This is a very, in a way, a sad day for me as well. It was very tough to make a decision to leave a great organization as this with the support given not only by the mayor and the council in appointing me to this position but to the committee level with Councilman Padilla as the chair of the committee and Councilwoman Chick and Councilman Savornich. This is a very tough moment. I'm excited about the future. It is a great opportunity. This is not something that was an easy decision for me. But I'd like to thank you over the last three years for all your support and your help. And Alex Padilla mentioned some of the accomplishments that the ITA has had. Those accomplishments are made through a team. And all of you are part of that team, as well as the mayor and my great ITA staff. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Information Technology Agency staff for performing the way they did because their performance was a great part in helping me look good. And I want them to know that that's understood. With your continued support, the Information Technology Agency, one of the greatest teams in the nation, can continue to provide the work that they've provided and continue to be the go-to agency when the city needs a success story. So thank you very much.
Before you leave, Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Ridley-Thomas each has a comment. Mr. Pacheco, Mark got there first.
Jesse has always been helpful to my office and gotten things done for us. But I also want to commend him on one thing that, if you look at the big screen here behind us, when I got here, I pointed out to Jesse that the flag was inverted, that originally it had red, yellow, and green, and that the official colors were green, yellow, and red. So I want to give him credit for correcting that and fixing that. I don't know how long it was incorrect, but Jesse got it changed. He's always been someone who appreciates us techies and us getting our equipment. So thank you so much for keeping our office up to speed with our computers.
Well, I'll call Mark first. Let me just call Mark because he actually had his button up first.
Oh, okay.
Mark, Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, I don't wish to commend Mr. Juaros for his keen eye and in taking note of inverted colors. That's not the public policy agenda to which I wish to speak, although I appreciate the fact that Mr. Pacheco has scoped out that territory in the name of being a techie.
I thought he was the lawyer.
Yes. We have to work this thing a little bit more carefully, I think. But I do rise to join both Mr. Padilla and Mr. Pacheco in commending Jesse Juaros for his leadership, his energy, his drive, his expertise, his responsiveness, his service orientation to members of the council, as well as trying to push the agency to yet another level in terms of delivery of information technology services and at the same time, the expansion of the technological infrastructure of our city. Jesse, I think your tenure was not a long tenure, but it was a brisk and meaningful tenure. And for that, I wish to commend you. Earnestly commend you and wish you well.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas, we have 10 members present now, so.
Then that means I get 10 more minutes of commendation from Mr. Juaros. Thank you, Madam President. Jesse, all Godspeed to you.
Ms. Chick?
I'm trying to think of something appropriately irreverent to say, Jesse. All that time, we're trying to figure out how to keep people and look at what happened. So I'm fully expecting that in your next role in life that you're going to continue to work with us on some of these things because you had some great ideas. It's been a pleasure working with you. And as my colleagues have said, we still have challenges ahead. But the private sector and the public need to work closely together on this. So we're going to have a new partner out there. I want to wish you good luck and thank you for the years of service you gave us.
Good luck from all of us and thanks from all of us. We're always sorry to lose -- You hire good people, they get better offers. What can I tell you? Or at least offers they can't refuse. Best of luck to you. All right, we do actually have 10 members present. So we are now going to call the roll and get the show on the road.
Bernson, Chick, Fuhr, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley-Thomas, Florence, Swax, Walters, and Galanters. 10 members present and quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, June 1st, 2001. The council has -- there are 15 council districts. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 o'clock. And if you believe that, I want to talk to you about some other things. But we try. We do meet soon after 10 o'clock. We are being viewed on the city's cable channel, Channel 35. And we are also available by council phone. This being the first meeting of the month, it is time for our monthly pledge of allegiance to the flag. Mr. Holden, would you like to lead? Mr. Holden, would -- All right, I'll call somebody else. Hang on, I need somebody to -- Mr. Holden, would you like to lead the pledge of allegiance? Yes, you do.
Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are now ready for the first order of business.
Approval of the minutes?
Are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
And those two.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be continued. Item number four, a request from the applicant in Council District 11 to have that matter continued to July 6th.
I'm sorry.
Item number four, continue to July 6th.
Item number four. Is there any objection to continuing item number four? Seeing none, it's continued.
Item number six, request from Council District 8 to continue that matter till June 6th. Excuse me, item number six.
Yes, item six to June -- to 6/6. Right, that's why it looks confusing. Any objection to that? We are continuing 6 to 6/6. It's done. I'm being careful.
On the regular agenda, items number one through three are ordinances and there are items noted for public hearing.
All right. I do not have any cards on those. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on items one through three?
Nope.
Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Members of the council, any specials, one through three? Seeing none, open the roll on items one through three. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved, but will carry over to next week because, students, if you're interested, if there aren't 12 votes, at least 12 votes and a unanimous vote on the first reading of an ordinance, it carries over one more week for a second reading, at which time it only requires eight votes. So a week from today, items one through three will be back on the agenda. Mr. Bernson has one.
Yes, we've had a request because of scheduling to change, to move the billboard ordinance, Mr. Ridley-Thomas's ordinance, which was scheduled originally for Tuesday, but we said Wednesday, but there's some problems. So I would move that we move that back to this Tuesday, which I believe is the 5th.
It certainly is. It's election day, and that, I believe, was the reason for the original request to move it from Tuesday to Wednesday.
But there are multiple other problems that are worse.
Has anybody worked it out with the person who wanted it to go to Wednesday? Okay. Is there any objection? I think we first have to reconsider it, do we not?
There should be a reconsideration. Which day is this from?
It's from -- when did we do this? Tuesday.
It was from the day -- well, it's last Tuesday, I believe.
Then you would have to move to the rules.
To suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules and to --
And reconsider.
Reconsider the continuation date.
The continuation date, right. Can we do that? Where's our city attorney? Can we do that? The normal rule would be that you can only reconsider something from the most recent agenda.
That's correct. You're suspending the rules, so.
But if we're suspending the rules, it's okay. All right, so Mr. Bernson's motion is to suspend the rules and reconsider the continuation date for the billboard ordinance and approve putting it on next Tuesday, June 5th, instead of next Wednesday, June 6th.
Right.
Okay. Open the roll, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that's approved.
Thank you.
We need to make sure that the people who were here on that item get notified of that change. So we'll have to take care of that. Okay, next item.
Items numbers five, seven, and eight on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, those hearings were held in committee. Are there any specials, members of the council? Five, seven, or eight? Seeing none, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
Items numbers nine through 22 on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, we have cards on the following items which will be called special so we can have the hearing. Nine, 10, 14, 17, 18, 20, and 22.
I understand Mr. Fuhr wishes to call item number 16 special also.
Well, we're about to get to that. Thank you. So those are called special because of the need for public hearing. Are there any other specials? Item 16.
Madam President, is there a necessity on voting on item 16 today?
Item 16.
If there is, if you can wait until Tuesday, that's a better day because then I won't -- otherwise I can't.
All right, so you want to continue item 16 until Tuesday. Is there any objection to continuing item 16 until next Tuesday? Seeing none, item 16 is continued to June 5th. Any other specials? 11 through 13, 15, 19, 21. It's already called special, there's a card. Any others? Here are the ones that are not yet called special. 11, 12, 13, 15, 19. 11, 12, 13, 15, 19, and 21. Seeing none, open the roll on those. Close the roll. Well, let's first of all, close the public hearing on them. And now, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Now.
That brings you back to item number 9, called special.
Okay, item number 9, we have two members of the public who wish to be heard. First, Melrose Larry Green, and then John Walsh. Mr. Green.
Good morning, I'm Melrose Larry Green, and, you know, I don't want to take a lot of time to say this. The meeting started an hour late, and this should be noted by those that are watching the replay, that this meeting started at 11:00 a.m., and it says right here, 10:00 a.m. I'll talk more in public comment about that, but it's a disgrace.
Yes, I was going to say, since you're coming on that.
You're not a cajole to anybody, unfortunately, but other people are in their jobs. That's disgraceful. All right, I just want to talk briefly about item number 9, which I support. It's very important. It's a motion relative to employment opportunities, youth employment opportunities in Department of Recreation and Parks. This is great, I support this, and it's wonderful. And this is a way to fight gang warfare in the city of L.A. by opening up the city to opportunities, to jobs, for young people, to keep them out of gangs. And this is why I support item number 9. I also support getting here -- you know, Jewish time is 10 minutes after 10, but not 11:00 a.m. You know, schoolteachers, bus drivers.
Mr. Green, I am going to call you on public comment. That's an appropriate item for this. This is about item 9.
I've got all the stats for the elections here. We'll talk about that later.
Let's talk about it later. Mr. Walsh.
Rest assured, I took a day off from work. I'm going back to work next week. You won't have to see me again. Unpleasant truth. Of course, this is a good issue. Of course, we should have counselors and stuff, and these kinds of things for children, for youth, but it is no replacement for fighting the gangs. And there's a politically correct consensus in this city, and the city is about to be taken over by people who don't want gang injunctions. They want counselors. Well, I ask the minority members of this council, who live in these gang-infested graffiti scarred neighborhoods, ever since Rafael Perez, ever since the gang injunctions were lifted, we are living in hell in these neighborhoods, because the gangs rule again. And I don't care how many ping pong tournaments you sponsor. And I know a lot of you live in Pacific Palisades, but some of us don't. And I'm telling you right now, soft on crime. And I tell you, read the L.A. Weekly this month, this week. A reporter named Trevino has a long story about what it's like in Pico Union now, what it's like, and what Rafael Perez did, which cost us hundreds of millions of dollars, and now we have no protection against the gangs. I know they get real quiet here when we talk about issues like this. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and just as a matter of correcting the record, there is not a single council member who lives in Pacific Palisades.
Move.
Move? None of us can afford to. The item 9 is now before us. Mr. Bernson.
Yeah, I just want to rise and support this, and I just want to comment in reference to Mr. Walsh's comments, and I understand is it indignation? I think we all feel the same way, John, but you're really espousing at the wrong area. The courts have been the ones that have set aside the injunction and things of that nature, so if we feel strongly enough, I think that we ought to make our voices heard there. Thank you.
Okay, open the roll on item 9. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Do we need forthwith on that? No, that's okay. Okay, item 10. Mr. Walsh.
It doesn't say Toilet-to-Tap, but that's what it is. And incidentally, the people in Pacific Palisades will not be drinking this Toilet-to-Tap water, and only a few of you on the council will be drinking this Toilet-to-Tap water. A Toilet-to-Tap is full of, you can answer, you can fill in the four letters which Toilet-to-Tap is. I think government never went more wrong than when they started Toilet, when you started Toilet-to-Tap. And please don't tell us, the scientists say it is fine. For 75 years in America, the scientists said that tobacco wouldn't kill you. The water mafia, and that's what the DWP and the MWD are, water mafia have assured us there will be no bacteria in their water. They have assured us the government will never foul up. Now, anybody out there in the audience, 35,000 people watching this, believe it, but I'm telling you, if we don't stop it, it will be brown fields and brown water. We'll be picking things out of our water. We might as well use our water as toilet water, because that's what we're going to be getting through our tap. Thank you.
That closes the public hearing on item 10. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next is item 14. 14, Mr. Green.
Item number 14 is a resolution relative to the After School Learning and Safe Neighborhoods Partnership Program, and it's a recommendation for council action subject to the concurrence of the mayor, and this is important. This must be approved. You know, it talks about basically expanding the program to allow schools to operate programs at multiple sites other than a school site, provide extended hours, increase grant incentives to schools, establish an annual cost of living adjustment, AKA COLA per hour, and create staffing requirements for the educational component of the program, as recommended by the mayor. Well, if it's good enough for Mayor Riordan, it's good enough for Melrose Larry Green. So I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you pass it, because I love the mayor.
Well, we have to close the public hearing first. All right, that closes the public hearing. Item 14 is before us, members of the council. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. We have passed it. I believe the next is item 17. Okay, it's quite -- okay. Item 17, Mr. Walsh.
I'm going to praise Mayor Bradley, because when Mayor Bradley was here, and a few of you were around, we used to get street sweeping in Hollywood every other night. And when Bradley was here, the streets were clean. Then when Riordan came in, the streets were clean in Brentwood. The streets are filthy. I don't have to tell any of you how filthy the gutters are, because when you, a few years ago, when you had a budget crisis, the first thing that gets caught, incidentally, in a budget crisis is cleanliness. It's street sweeping. The city is a mess. Look at the streets. Come on down to the neighborhoods where I work. Come down to 51st and Avalon, and take a look at the streets down there, especially Mr. Ridley-Thomas. I might like to give, I'd like to give Mr. Ridley-Thomas a tour of his district, areas in his district that I don't think he's ever been in, but where I work. Ladies and gentlemen, Riordan has done, Riordan got the gangs out of Hollywood, and he got the cruising out of Hollywood, but he didn't get the filth out of Hollywood or any lower-income neighborhood in this city. We need a fortune spent on street cleaning. We need it now. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing on item 17, members of the council.
Madam President, that was John Walsh.
Yes, it was. I -- we have taken note of that. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Item.
Mark, take the tour, Mark.
Item -- wait, guys, hang on. Item 18. Item 18, we have two people who wish to be heard. First, Mr. Melrose Larry Green, and then Mort Allen.
Boy, am I glad I came to this meeting. Boy, oh, boy. Look, I love this. I love this item 18. This is what you call something you throw in on a Friday when nobody's looking, because it's the weekend. This is for those that are laymen out there, that are not political aficionados such as I. This is one of these motions relative to special events. What these are, these are events where you waive certain costs, insurance, what have you, the cones, the traffic cones, what have you, because it's good. It's good for the city. And I don't mind when you waive $250, or $821, or $917 for Mexicans, or Jews, or blacks, or what have you, African-Americans. But look at this. Now, item number 18B is waiving fees for California Youth Theater Benefit T. Good, I like California Youth Theater, I like T, I like benefits. $250, no problem. Item number C, residents of Lillian Way, 4th Annual Block Party. I think I live near Lillian Way. I love it. $314. But look at D. Look at D as in David. Sponsored by my good friend Mark Ridley-Thomas. 10th Annual MTV Movie Awards on June 2nd, 2001. Fee waiver, $20,000. Fee waiver, $20,000. What is MTV? Some kind of charity? MTV can't afford to pay for their events, you know what? If the MTV Awards want to go to New York and not pay the $20,000, I think you can go get the VH1 Awards and waive the fees for $10,000, and then boom, you save the city $10,000. I would like members of the council to tell me and the people out there who are voters, they're voters, why do you want to waive fees for the MTV Awards for $20,000? Is MTV a charity? I don't know about? Are they a 501(c)? I want to hear the response.
Thank you. That closes -- I'm sorry, Mr. Allen. No, Mark.
Madam President, that was Mary Melrose Green.
I kind of feel funny. I'm Mort Allen. I'm not used to these grandstanding things. I just wanted to bring up something that I just think is, doesn't look right, and that is item A, which is the South Robertson Party two days before the election. And I think that it's not much, it's $3,000, but it's something to look at sight and sound and all that. It's South Robertson is where the main part of the billboard controversy is, where they say that there's so many billboards. And so I just don't think the city should pay the $3,000 or $4,000 to sponsor an event two days before an election, which is the main issue in the political campaign. I just want to put that on record.
Thank you. Okay, that closes the public hearing on item 18. Mr. Bernson.
Yeah, I'm only going to comment on one phase of that, and that is on the one for the MTV Movie Awards. You know, we hear this controversy all the time, every time we have the Emmys or the Academy Awards. And, you know, Los Angeles is the heart, the home, the main artery of the entertainment industry, and it means a lot to our city to keep it here. And, you know, it may be, it may sound like a lot of money, but believe me, the number of jobs and the notoriety that the city gets in conjunction with the arts and the things that take place are a small price to pay for that, because right now, the entertainment industry is the number-one industry in Los Angeles and in Southern California. And it's very important, members of the council, that we keep it here, because it's being lured by other cities. New York, Chicago, other cities would love to have the things that we have here, because they know that it means economic strength. And so this is, just look at this, Larry, as an investment. You know, sometimes you have to invest a buck to make a buck, and I support this, because even though it may not be the same caliber as the Academy Awards, but it's part of the industry, and I think that we have to be very cognizant of the fact that it's our number-one industry, and we need to support it here.
Anybody else? Okay, open the roll on item 18. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That, that is those, are approved. That brings us to item 20, and just while we're at it, I'll mention that item 22, the gentleman has said he needed to speak only if there are questions, but we'll get to that in due course. Item 20, Mr. Green.
Well, to borrow from somebody else's playbook, here we go again. Who said that? Was that Reagan?
I think the line is, it ain't over till it's over.
Well, believe me, that's the low story of my life. All right, number 20. And don't ever compare me to Leonard Shapiro or these other freaks that come down here. I have an MBA from Cornell, and I studied public administration. All right, number 20 is relative, this is a great one. This one I love. This is my favorite in the whole agenda. This is great. Now the city is a little banking organization also. It's not just a city, it's also a bank. This is relative to the transfer of funds covering the outstanding balance of the costs of the 2,000 El Grito Celebration. Well, listen, my grandfather's Cuban, I speak fluent Spanish, I've got no problems with the El Grito Celebration. But let me, let's read on, let's read on. Recommendation for council action subject to the approval of the mayor, that's Mayor Riordan, transfer $22,000 in the General City Purposes Fund. Now, for the layman out there, there's lots of funds, there's funds that you have in cost, in governmental accounting, where you transfer unencumbered balances, encumbered balances, et cetera, et cetera, from one fund to the other to pay for things. This is a transfer of $22,000 to the Department of General Services Trust Fund, number 843, blah, 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 account number 2200, et cetera, as a loan to cover the outstanding balance for the cost of the 2,000 El Grito Celebration, funds to be reimbursed by private and corporate donations. All I want to know is what is the El Grito Celebration? Mr. Bernson, the senior member of the council, was kind enough to tell me how the MTV Awards, being in L.A., are worth it because of the competition from other cities, and I accede to that. I would like to know from the sponsors of item number 20, what is so important about the El Grito Celebration? I know nothing of it. And why can't they get their $20,000 from a bank? Why do we, if the city is so broke, why do we have to spend? That's a lot of money. I know a lot of Jewish people out there that could use $20,000, too. So give me an answer. And I'm not prejudiced, you know who I'm voting for Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That closes the public hearing. Larry, calm down. All right, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Pacheco is next.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, there's a substitute motion.
Right, well, it's an amending motion, actually.
Amending motion, sorry.
Asked that we amend item number 20 with, to include the items in 20A. Simply what's going on here, colleagues, is, as you know, El Grito is a public-private event where the city of Los Angeles, along with many of our friends in corporate America, have put on the El Grito for about 50, 60 years now here in the city of Los Angeles. Also, it is an international event, because we're via satellite linked to Mexico City. This year, the organization basically is in debt, $22,000, because of some expenses that went over the budget. I have decided to personally transfer $22,000 from my office account to the city's portion of the support to pay off those debts, so that we can have a good relationship with those vendors. And once we go back to the process of putting on the event this year, I am working very hard with my colleagues, Councilman Padilla and Councilmember Hernandez, to make sure that this year's event is also breaking even and making sure that the event goes forward. And Councilmember Lex Reyes.
All right, the, okay, we have before us the amending motion. If there's no objection to the amending motion, we're going to vote on item 20 as amended. Is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection to the amendment? What, you want me to vote on it?
I don't know if the amendment's been distributed yet.
Yeah, I think it has.
I haven't received a copy.
Ah-ha, you mean it wasn't distributed to you? Can we please make sure the clerk has a copy? Okay, so, we're now going to vote on item 20 as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, as amended. That, roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that's approved, so the matter is now before us, Ms. Chik.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, first of all, you'll notice that there are quite a few of us who signed on to this motion. This is really an example of bad business, bad process, ignoring the will and wishes ignoring the will and wishes of the public and of the city council, I think we're about to show. This is regarding property at Van Nuys Airport. There has been, in my opinion, going on for way too long, but very near to conclusion, the Van Nuys Master Plan, which is very close to being adopted. And what we have just learned is that an RFP has just been released in a very, very tight time period, asking for responses back on three pieces of property to go out for leases at Van Nuys Airport before the master plan is adopted, not allowing the Van Nuys Citizens Advisory Committee to participate, something that's a longstanding part of the, the process, and is a good one, to involve the local community. And that the awarding of the, of the leases on these three parcels will be before the Airport Commission on June 26, which absolutely doesn't make sense to try and do something like this four days before an entire new leadership team and new members of council are coming in, and all new appointees on commissions and citizen advisory committees. It smacks of back-room, closed-room, dirty deals that are meant to go through in a quick, secretive way, disallowing the normal public process and the normal feedback from other stakeholders. My motion simply asks, and it has to be an ask, but I very much want to bring this out into public purview, that we are requesting the Airport Commission to extend the period of response on the RFP to a 90-day period, which is much more appropriate, and to allow the master plan also to go forward. So my motion is asking the Commission to extend that period and to make this a process that is done fairly, openly, and appropriately. Thank you.
Ms. Menzickowski.
Ms. Chick spoke very, very eloquently on this. There's, there's no question that this is not a good deal. And most specifically, it's not a good deal, because it deals with a piece of property that is in question in the master plan. There are various things that could or might be done with this property, and there's not a decision. Moreover, when the Airport Commission has looked at extending these leases, or creating new leases, and in fact, it's very interesting, an airport spokeswoman said that it's fine, and they don't have to do a big process for just extending a lease. And that may be the case. But this is not an extended lease. This would be a brand-new lease on a piece of property that is vacant, that has been subject to a lot of proposals in the master plan, which has not been rushed forward. They're leaving the master plan behind, still lingering, and yet looking to create an aviation-supported or an aviation-related use on this piece of property in an area that may not be appropriate. So this is something that really bears a lot, a lot more input. Input from the public, input from the advisory committee, input from a lot of the airport uses that are there, and the other, the other less sees. And I think that this very, very quick-paced process is an 11th-hour effort. And the question that, in fact, is attempting to be brought together to the Airport Commission on its last meeting, June 26, four days before they are, and the mayor is leaving office, is very much inappropriate. And so I ask for unanimous vote.
And let me just add to that. You, both of you are so polite about this. The fact is that the Board of Airport Commissioners has a habit of doing this kind of thing, not only at Van Nuys Airport, but certainly at LAX as well. And I, too, would like to urge a unanimous vote. It is time for us to change the way those guys do business out there. Oh, but it's been time for a long time. Yes, no, it's, yeah, well, all right. I hope it's coming. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that, and that will go, alas, as a request, but it will go forthwith. Okay, what else do we have?
You have public comment?
Oh, yes, so we do. All right, we have three people who have asked to be heard on public comment. First, Melrose Larry Green, then Mort Allen, and then John Walsh. Mr. Green.
I will try to limit my comments to just a couple of minutes, because there are other people that want to be heard. This is unbelievable, what's going on today in the paper. I'm looking at the Daily News today. They, an editorial page, they endorse Hahn for mayor, Delgado for city attorney. And they endorse Delgado because the challenges awaiting the next LA city attorney are many, reforming the LAPD, helping to clean up City Hall, and getting the city's $1 billion, $1 billion, be like, boy, $1 billion legal liability under control. I would think, maybe, maybe I'm just stupid, but I would think that perhaps our city attorney presently is in some way responsible for the billion dollars of liability. But, you know, the LA Times, Daily News, I think we ought to bring back the Herald Examiner. That's my, my suggestion about that. But no more about newspapers. I only have a couple of minutes now. This is not campaigning. This is not campaigning. No camp, no, no, I know, I know the rules. Hey, you know, if we had started this meeting on time, you would have been done by 10:30, Nate. You would have been done by 10:30 if you got here on time today. Hang on, hang on, hang on. I think it's a disgrace.
That's my line.
It's a disgrace. What's that?
"Hang on" is my line. Go ahead.
I think it's a disgrace, since last night, I almost got beaten up by some of the supporters of one of the candidates for mayor. The candidate himself and I almost got beaten up. We could have used some of you cops last night at the Museum of Tolerance of all places. But I do want to say that this election Tuesday is critical and important. And whoever the mayor is, whether it's Antonio or, or Jimmy, I will work with the new mayor of LA. But what I want you all to realize, yes, yes, Nate, we go back. We ran for mayor in '93, Nate, remember? I would like everybody here around the city council to recognize that tonight, we have a very important game in the NBA. And our Lakers are Western champions. And maybe I've missed something, but I haven't heard any commendations honoring the Lakers. And they're soon to be world champions. In fact, you may as well print up some certificates. But I know, right now, the Lakers are sitting at home. I know Kobe watches the city council meetings, as does Shaq. And I want to say hi to Kobe, Shaq. I know Phil Jackson personally. I think it's a disgrace that this city council has not honored the Lakers. So I hope you're working on your commendations now, because I don't think Philadelphia or Milwaukee has a chance against our beloved Lakers. That's all I want to say. And good luck to all the candidates, but especially to my candidate.
Weren't you there last year? We did a wonderful celebration for them.
No, that was last year.
And we are looking forward to doing it again when they bring the championship on.
And I know that, that, both Antonio and Jimmy are big Lakers fans. Thank you.
Mr. Allen.
That's all. I'm done.
Well, I've just been scolded by Lisa, so I can't say too much here. And what I'm saying has got to be taken out of the realm of politics. I promised her that. All I want to say is, I would like to see each of you, I know that Cindy has done it, I think Mike has done it, but I'd like to see each of you get your staff this weekend to take an inventory in your district of your billboards. I think this thing is so out of hand. And I think that you got to realize that there's three sizes. There's the bulletin, there's the poster, and then there's the little eight-sheet gas station ones, which are the same size as all the bus shelters. And the city's asking for 5,000 more bus shelters. And I think that you need to get a count of the big ones and find out where they're at, because nobody seems to know the total amounts of where they're at. Now, I, I looked at, at the, the totals of one company, and I found that 80% of them were not in the valley. Only 20% are in the valley. So I think that you'd be much better prepared if you all had that and gave it to, I don't know, Deetner, somebody, to analyze, so we know exactly where they're at. Because you're asking for something that I don't think is really necessary, because over 4,000 are the little gas station ones. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
Issues are the next Ethics Commission and the next city attorney, narcotics involvement by elected officials. On this city council, we have had two official, two city councilmen. One was arrested and convicted as a drug felon. The other was pled guilty just a few weeks ago, and it was tested positive during litigation. I am tired of people being elected and sitting on this council. You have two convicted felons on this council. I am asking right now that the city Ethics Commission and the city attorney have some sort of system, voluntary drug testing of candidates, voluntary drug testing of elected officials. Mr. Fuhr, I'd like to see you drug-tested. Ms. Chick, I'd like to see you drug-tested. I assure you, you have nothing to worry about. And I would also like Mr. Antonio Vieragosa to voluntarily, now, be drug-tested. And I'd like Mr. Hahn to be voluntarily, now, drug-tested. And as far as the Vignalles are concerned, I want an Ethics Commission investigation into what the LA Times said last week. And that is that they, the Vignali owns a catering company. I want to know whether Mr. Vignali is laundering money to candidates here. I don't think Mr. Antonio Vieragosa has a thing to worry about. And I say to the press and to the whole city and to the country, hell, no, I won't flow. No, flow now. Drug testing for every single person up here. And I want everybody here, if you think you have a constitutional right not to be incriminated, then don't flow. And I'd like to say to, to my friend, he was being, being hurt over here by the Gloria Marina Gate. I just want you to know, you are being held as the scapegoat. Because he is not, it is not his problem. I would like Mr. Henry Lozano to go before the Ethics Commission and the city attorney. Now, where was Henry Lozano? The mastermind, perhaps, of Marina Gate. Where was he last week? He was in Cuba. He was so afraid of getting caught in Marina Gate, he went to Cuba. I know you have to stop me. Don't cut this from the tape. Drug testing now, and I'll leave you with two cups. This one is for Hahn, and this one is for Vieragosa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That closes the public comment period.
And I'll give you mine, too, right now.
Oh, thank you. What's, what's left on the agenda here?
Motion's opposed and referred.
Nate, leave it alone. Without objection, the motions are posted.
Councilmember's request for him's future.
It's a point of personal privilege.
Must you? I'm trying to finish off.
Yeah, yeah, point of personal privilege. I took a Tylenol this morning.
Did it help? Okay. The motions are posted and referred. The excuses?
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on June 27 and 29. A motion is required. And on July 24, 25, and 27, no motion is required for city business.
Okay. Mr. Pacheco moves. Unanimous vote.
The desk is clear.
All right, let me just point out to everybody, before we do adjourning motions, that we are going to be having difficulty with the quorum for the rest of the month. And so, because, as you know, Ms. Walters has been ill, and she'll get back when she can get back. But if she's ill, she can't be here. And of course, with the vacancies, this is, this is a tough time. We have, we're going to do the best we can to accommodate everybody. It looks like on the 15th, we will not have a quorum. And so we'll, we'll bring in a motion and make an official recess out of that. But please, we've got so much stuff that just needs to get cleaned up. If you can possibly come in on any of these meetings, please. This is, this is the rest of the month, basically. If you don't need to have an excuse, please don't take it, because we're awfully tight on the quorums.
Madam President, Madam President.
No, we can't make daily appointments.
Madam President.
Sir.
After the election, one week after, after the election is certified, we pick up one extra person.
That is correct. We, although at the rate we're going, we're still going to have quorum problems. Yes, you're right.
I know, but we pick up one extra person.
All right.
Then, of course, Mr. Burnson stands in for two.
Well, we can put a voc on for a couple of districts as well. But we probably aren't going to do that. So we are now ready for adjourning motions. Would everybody please rise for adjourning motions? And let me start by asking on behalf of Mrs. Walters that we, the council adjourn in memory of Shirley Ann Harris, who has worked extensively with Ms. Walters' office. She started in 1986, a summer youth program for the inner-city youth. And she's worked on a number of different volunteer projects. She's worked at the Voting Post, feeding the homeless, the Special Olympics, and the Department of Recreation, worked very closely with the district office, and passed away at a very young age, leaving her daughter and granddaughter. The funeral arrangements, funeral will be held on June 4 at 10:00 AM at the Victory Baptist Church on East 48th Street. And Ms. Walters particularly wanted to let her family know how much she and all of us will miss Ms. Harris' contributions. Mr. Holden.
That's a friend of mine. I don't have the information, but I'll provide it for you later. June Everett, she and her husband, his Martinez, was in a sports utility vehicle. And just a few days ago, they overturned, and they both died in that kind of an accident. Very sad. She was a longtime employee, but now retired from the County Department of Public Social Services, contributed so much, and a community activist. So she and both, her husband will be missed. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, Madam President, we have a young man here. His name is Clarence E. Jones. He was well-known around the city tennis courts, acting as an instructor and coach for 20 years. At the time of his passing, he was a tennis coach for the girls' tennis team in Inglewood High School. And last week or so, he had just finished hitting some balls at Rancho Cienega when he had a heart attack and passed away at the age of 54. Guy was in pretty good shape. Also, it's already been mentioned, I'm sure, by, I believe, by Mr. Wax, but Harry Blackman. Harry Blackman was a longtime resident of Southern California. He was the owner of the White Front Discount Stores. For those of you who are old enough, you remember the White Front. And he had that, even when they had the insurrection in South Central, 1965. His stores, he lost a few of his stores. Never got upset about it, still contributed to the community.